It's an Empire Blue Cross and Bruce Shield Plan. Our assumption for that plan was eight percent. The other two plans are MVP and CBTHP. And based on the last three-year history, we are assuming a 12% increase for next year. So the health insurance increase is $526,000, 9.52% increase. The budget would increase 1.33% based on this assumption. We will have better information regarding this in March. At the end of January, we are having preliminary renewal meetings as part of DHI. Last year, we were able to have a health insurance premium holiday for health insurance. We're not sure where we are with that for next year. Workers' compensation is just a function of some of our losses and also a function of the percentage of payroll. We're projecting a 4% increase next year and a budget increase of approximately less than 10% of the percent. As we discussed earlier, the debt service is increasing, and that increases for the principal payment on the high school. The increase is $522,000, a little bit over a 40% increase. The percent increase on the budget for this line item alone is 1.32%. When you add all of these areas up, the 2012-2013 rollover budget is $41,995,000, almost $42 million. The increase of the 1111 budget is $2,481,000, and the percent increase at this time is 6.28%. If you take a look at just these five areas, these five areas, salaries, health insurance, the two retirement systems, and the increase in debt service, these five areas alone total $2.2 million and make up 5.66% of the 6.28% budget increase.
Michelle?
Sure.
And right now, the only contract that's in effect is for the administrative. We have two unsigned contracts, basically expiring contracts, the teachers and the...
The administrators are in midstream. The teachers expire in June. The custodial staff are in their contract. We have a contract for them, and it's the clerical support staff that have expired as of last June. So there are two contracts essentially that are up for next year's budget.
So any increases in salaries are going to add to that number?
That's correct. That's correct. It's all basically the same. What we did here was give you an analysis by category of the rollover budget. And basically, if you look at salary benefits, it's making up 76% of the entire budget. And one of the reasons for this slide is to show that if we started to talk about, well, let's cut 10% in equipment and 10% in supplies or 5% across the board, it's not going to come up as the kind of cuts that we need. The money is in the salary of the benefits. At the December meeting, we provided the board with a presentation on the 2% tax cap. And just as we get into talking about what we need to cut to get there, I just wanted to put a couple bullets up there to give you an overview. The tax cap does not limit the property tax levy to 2% because there are exclusions from it, which we went over in our December meeting. In order for us to increase the budget more than what our tax cap would take, we would need 60% voter approval if we were to exceed that number. One of the other important things that we talked about in December is the limits based on a formula that's outlined in the law, but it will vary from district to district depending on individual district circumstances and the amount of exclusions they're able to take. As we indicated, there are certain exclusions from the tax limit, and the limit is tied into CPI, the Consumer Price Index, or the rating inflation. This slide is also from our December presentation, and it talks about where we would need to cut to get to an in-line listed property tax cap. Basically, our budget, we look at our 1111 budget and our tax levy of $29 million, and we look at the total. The total budget based on this can be $40,646,201. The expenditures that we projected was $41.9 million. The total amount that we can have a levy increase is 2.87%. We need to cut $1,349,000 based on all the assumptions that we made right now. Looking at revenues for next year, for the rollover budget, all the other revenues stayed the same. We looked at a rollover budget, and we reduced the revenue for next year, the transportation aid by $50,000 due to the fact that in the current school year, we cut a bus run, so the aid would be reduced. If we had an additional 5% aid decrease next year instead of keeping the aid flat, in addition to the $1.3 million, we would have to cut an additional $326,000. If we had a 10% aid decrease next year, in addition to the $1.3 million, we'd be looking at cutting another $652,000. The next slide just gives you a little bit of historical data on where Spackenkill has been over the last five years and an average increase. The average budget-to-budget increase was 4.8%, and the average levy increase was approximately Just a few quick slides on the property tax cap and the contingency budget. If the budget is defeated twice, or if after one defeat, the school board decides not to put another budget out to the community through a vote, then for next year, the contingency budget cannot be higher than the levy that the current budget is now. So based on those assumptions, we would have to cut an additional amount of $1.3 million from where we are right now, and any other equipment that's not related to health and safety would have to be reduced.
So that would be a total cut of 2.60, and 1.3 that we have to get within the levy and another 1.3 to get to zero.
And what this next slide is just saying that if we're defeated after two budget votes, they must adopt a budget with a tax levy less than or equal to the prior year, and that's where the 1.3 comes into place. The next step that we wanted to just talk about a little bit is the fiscal condition of the district. The district received its external audit for the 2010-11 school year. On tonight's agenda, there were a few recommendations that the board received regarding segregation of duties. All in all, that was an unqualified opinion. Back in 2010, Moody's, which is a bond rating service, assigned a AA2 bond rating to Spackenkill. And at that time, they assigned this bond rating to Spackenkill. They looked back through financial statements. They looked back at previous audits. And what they said was the rating of AA2 is based on the district's well-maintained financial operations, low debt levels, and a stable tax base. They continued to say that Moody's believes the district will maintain its health and financial position, given its strong management practices and a track record of reserves. Spackenkill for the last 10 years, we should say, I'm sorry, five, since we had to have audit reports, we looked through our files in the district office, and we had 10 years' worth of audit reports from our external auditor. For the last 10 years, Spackenkill has retained an unqualified opinion. What that means is that auditors were in the district the end of the fiscal year. They went through the financial statements. They went through financial transactions, and they found that the financial statements fairly represented the district's status at that time. In the last five years, Spackenkill has retained a maximum in unappropriated fund balance, or also known as, if you wanted to say, a ringing debt line. The state has allowed us to keep workers' debt and unappropriated fund balance. Spackenkill has continued to do that, and currently, we have $1.5 million in unappropriated fund balance. What we need to do to continue ongoing is to continue to look at ways to maximize our state aid whenever possible, continue to look for outside funding sources, continue to monitor any reserve funds that we have. The next slide will talk about this, but continue to achieve some cost savings through purchasing initiatives that we've taken on and maximizing some operating efficiencies through use of technology. Some of the cost-cutting measures that have been done in the past was reducing teachers, administrators, and support staff, eliminated actually a transportation route, two years in a row, so two transportation routes. We had a central Hudson lighting initiative. We're working on energy edge to conserve energy. We've had some purchasing initiatives that we work on. We use BOSI's bids, New York State contracts, requests for proposals, shared services. We use state aid planning, and we use a lot of shared services through BOSI's, shared maintenance, shared printing, BOSI's cooperative transportation. Those areas in BOSI's, we receive state aid on those services. This next chart, it looks larger than it is just because we wanted people to be able to see it. But this came from called Dutchess County Fact Book, and it's produced every year, and it's an ongoing look at expenditures for the districts in Dutchess County. And what this shows, this is the last book that was produced, from 2006 through 2010-11, it's showing that the administrative costs as a percentage of our total budget has been decreasing. Now, if you look on the left side, you can see it's not a huge reduction in terms of the number of percentage, but it went from 11.27% down to 10.9%. So there has been some reductions as our other costs are going up. The same Dutchess County Fact Book through 9/10 showed that increases in administrative costs over a five-year period. Spackenkill right now is the 10th lowest of the 13th Dutchess County School Districts. And the book also goes through each category and adjusts for CPI over the five-year period. Over the five-year period that was shown, Spackenkill's administrative costs have decreased by almost 8% over the same period. The next steps in the budget process, the next meeting on January 24th, there will be more budget discussion. The same meeting is February 13th. On March 12th, on March 27th, the superintendent is scheduled to present her budget. April 9th, budget adoption. May 7th, budget hearing. And May 15th, the budget review. Happy listening, gentlemen.
Okay, more numbers to come.
Thanks, Michelle. If you guys talk anymore, I'm going to put in a business official meetings. I know it's all speculation about state aid, but I mean, based on what, you know, you've heard, I mean, it sounds like it wouldn't be reduced. You agree with that, and I know nothing's in stone.
Right, well, we use a stated plan service called Quest Art. Superintendent and I are attending a meeting at BOSI's with all the school districts in the county to see if they have any better crystal ball than the rest of us have. Right now, do we anticipate a reduction in state aid? Not in general state aid, but there could be reductions in other areas. There's been talk about cutting back on transportation aid, some of the other areas. So overall, done, but no one's projecting a 5% increase.
Well, I mean, in the paper, I think everybody's seen that the governor's proposal is a 4% increase for state aid, but I understand also that that is primarily targeted at the high-needs districts. So we're not likely to see much of that. That concludes that. I will go to comments to the board. I'll remind you, there is a three-limit time limit per person, and please state your name and address when you approach the microphone, and you may comment on any issue.
Hi, Nancy Koss. I just have a question. On the last page of this packet, when it talks about, it's talking about, the pages before that talk about prior reductions in savings, and then that last page says other possible reductions. And I'm just wondering, and other possible reductions, is that talking about what are the other possible reductions that were considered in the fact work? Or are you saying that these are the possible reductions that are being considered for this year?
Both.
Both. Okay, so do I make my pitch now or do I?
That's where they have this.
Okay, I'll just say it real quickly. Please, please don't put a virus council, please don't put a virus council. Okay, and I say this not to many selfish motives, because I won't have any kids in the district next year, but for the sake of the kids who are coming into the high school. And I noticed coming in at the high school is the only school whose population is actually increasing. So to have them lose somebody that critical, I think, would just be terrible. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell and community. My name is Anna Shaw, and I reside at 20 Byron Drive. I've had the opportunity to talk to some of the board members, or communicate, I should say, since the decision three figures was issued on December 12th. And I've had the opportunity tonight to listen to this board talk about grade-level school transitions and putting parents in the untenable position of having to choose what amounts to a lesser of two evils. I listened to Dr. Berkowitz stress the importance of literacy, and she showed us how important it is for the students at the top middle school level to meet and achieve standard levels in learning, which begs the question tonight, why grade-level schools? Dr. Powell, you marketed the measure as having no academic downsides when you brought this back up in October, I believe. And as you're more certainly aware, that contention is fairly flawed. First of all, it is, there's compelling evidence that shows that grade-level school formats can have significant impact educationally on our children. Not only are the transitions hard, but they are very difficult to mitigate at a time when it is our children's most formative years. In addition to the burdens that grade-level school puts on our children on an educational level, there is also the unfair burden that the grade-level school measure puts on our families and the district families who are forced to juggle what amounts to the best interests of the children versus perhaps employment issues, or coordinating schedules, or putting our families in the position of having to choose and accommodate involvement with their children versus having to commit to perhaps work or employment and perhaps jeopardizing their employment in an effort to maintain the schedule that accommodates grade-level school format. In addition, transportation is a problem, and as a parent, I can tell you that I do not support having my kindergartner on the bus, who is going to be shipped out of my home neighborhood when he could be going five minutes away from my home. He's going to be now taken down Route 9, which has been also described as the deadliest highway in Dutchess County by the National Traffic Safety Commission. I'm not okay with that as a parent. I'm also not okay with the fact that I don't have any security to know that my kindergartner is going to be safely welcomed in. Is he going to be well-protected in that car, in the bus at a time where he is vulnerable? And it's not necessary for him to be transferred to another school when there is a neighborhood model that has stood in his community for over 50 years and has given stellar and excellent academic results.
In three minutes, so just come up if you could.
Anna, you can have my kid.
No, we're not, we're not. Let her speak.
Well, I will conclude today by saying that I do not support grade-level schools, and I can tell you that I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for 400 district families who also...
Next, anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm kind of coming into this very late in the game.
Name and address.
Steve Cohen, Ninety-Satara Road Drive. So I'm curious how much grade-level, what is it called? Grade-level schooling? Yes, how much it's saving? What is the net saving we're doing to this? And how many positions are being freed up? And how many educators are we losing in making this change? Can some other changes be made in other administrative layers of the school district as opposed to impacting educators?
Okay, I'll give you a condensed version of my opinion, number one of five on a board. So the answer in a moment's worth is based on what we did mention tonight, and assuming that goes into effect, we would be losing five teachers, is that correct? That, that...
And increasing class sizes from what to what?
And we'd be increasing class sizes. It'll be going up to that 1T range.
From what?
Well, you have some unbalanced sizes. Nassau has a couple of classes of 12. Hagan has averaged around 18, 19.
Average, from average to average.
Well, averaging Hagan is 18 or so, so 18 to 20.
Nassau has more disparity because it has fewer segments in classes, usually only two. So sometimes, if you have 15 in a class, you have to...
You gotta average it all. Nassau, Hagan, average school class size, but, you know, across the board, going through what class size across the board? That's the net. What's the difference?
It's more, I guess, it's hard to say because you have, some are very low at Nassau because you can't combine, it's too big to combine, but yet you can't, you can't combine.
Okay, so we're losing five educators, so what's the net saving?
We're losing that many. For next year, in keeping the second graders at both schools, it was projected to be 398,780, and then you would have to subtract the 20,000 that they approved for the fifth graders.
How much is coming out of the administrative layer of the public school system?
We haven't finished the conversation about budget cuts yet for next year. That continues, this is one piece of 1.3 million dollars. We're not done.
Okay, but shouldn't both be examined at the same time?
Everything is being examined in my book. There can't be anything left off the table. It's just...
Shouldn't it be weighed against each other in turn?
Well, I don't think it's either or, it's a both. I don't, that's unfortunately the situation we're in to try and cut 1.3 million. I don't think it's an either-or. If it were, then I would prefer.
Okay, go. Now, you're saying it's going to save 398,000 approximately?
And, I'm sorry, you have your three minutes, and I shouldn't interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, I'm asking a question. You're saying that you think it's going to save...
It will next year. The biggest, some of the biggest dilemma we have right now is that we are losing students. So as the class sizes get smaller, especially in Nassau, it's very difficult to keep and maintain those class sizes. If you combine it to a larger group, you can then make those cuts more evenly and possibly save more money by having those four or five sections together and going to four, where you might not be able to do it when you have one school that only has two sections, or sometimes one section.
But that figure is probably before you figured out how to less transition people were stressed related, you know, the fourth graders and first graders.
About 375, 380.
So 375.
Do we have a busing plan on how we're going to do it?
Yes.
Are we going over Route 9? Are we going on Route 9?
It will depend on where the students are coming from. I mean, some students go on Route 9 now, obviously, they could get...
I mean, isn't that going to increase the cost? It is the bus route from across town and both cross each other?
The answer is no.
I mean, there's a lot of speculation too in this budget, and it seems to me that maybe we should push this off a little bit before we decide we're going to go break up schools. Maybe we can get some more hard figures before we vote for it, and maybe we should put it through a vote. I mean, we did have a split board, so there's obviously some, you know, there's some people that have a little issue with this and some people don't. So maybe, so everybody can feel comfortable about it. We got all the numbers out front, and then maybe we discuss a little bit more before we just make this decision to just go for grade-level schooling, because I don't know, I don't see the power to save all this money. Maybe I'm wrong.
I second your motion.
I think if we, I think if we knew a little bit more about what things were going to cost, like your time track, or, you know, all this stuff, maybe the busing routes, if we could break everything down just a little better, maybe we would all be a little more understanding of what you're saying as well. I, you know, I'm kind of late in the game here, because I really didn't know what was going on. There wasn't really a lot out there, but now I'm kind of in the game, and I'd like to know a little bit more about what's going on.
I, well, I invite you to contact anybody at district office.
Is there any way, is there any, I know I'm just...
There's a lot on the website, but you can certainly contact district offices directly.
I know, but I know I'm just a parent. I have no power really, but is there any way I can urge you to push this decision off? Maybe a month or two?
Well, I think, well, our dilemma on the month or two is that certain things have to be met. Teachers require a certain notice as far as if we are going to excise that teacher, and that's why January was basically the cutoff date as to having, which is why we went with the number of sections tonight, is so that that process can move forward.
I understand what you're saying, but a lot of people here, when we get laid off or fired from our jobs, we don't get to...
I understand, but by law...
I mean, I would like everybody to have as much notice as possible, but don't you think that maybe in 30 days we'd be kind of pushing back a little bit? 30, 60 days, we could kind of push it back a little?
We originally were going to make this decision in September, and we pushed, November, I'm sorry, November, we pushed it to December.
It was going to be anywhere.
And we're going to January, but again, it was just so late, and then just consider the sections as well. We went with it in December, and it is January, and we need to make that determination by really this meeting to make those deadlines. Sorry, but three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, Janukas, I'd be pleased to attend. So your Slide 26 was impressive with the cost-cutting measures that were the state, but it only translates to 0.3% through six over five years, and over the last three years, it's only 0.03%. So is the board doing enough to really cut administrative costs?
Administrator, keep in mind, what, we have 11 administrators?
Well, administrative costs are bigger than administrators. We have 10 and a half administrators. Administrative costs also equal office staff and legal fees, things like that. It's not just people, Colton.
Understand, that's what I'm saying, that what is the board doing to cut these costs? Because it seems insignificant. But it seems insignificant, and we are trying to impose grade-level schooling, right, without consideration of what alternatives we would consider for reducing the cost?
Well, I think you're seeing, I understand what you're saying. It's not a lot as a percentage, but whenever the other cost is going up and that one is going down, I think that shows we're looking at that in 20%.
But why are we not looking at the costs that are going up? What, and analyze why it's going up and how do we, you know, control it or get it down?
A lot, salary and that...
I know, but when I look at the healthcare, it's 25% compared to the salary. My company doesn't spend 25% on healthcare.
I can't disagree, but that, you're under sort of contracts in, and told they're negotiated differently. You abide by your contracts.
So did the board consider other alternatives to GLAs?
To what?
To GLAs, the grade-level schooling. What alternatives did the board consider before, you know, moving forward with GLAs?
Is grade-level schools, I mean, that's the two models.
But his question was, what was the alternative?
What other alternatives to reducing costs were considered?
Reducing teachers without going to grade-level schools.
Yeah, but wouldn't you reduce the section by maybe changing the school boundaries? So if your objective is to reduce the section, you're pushing the same thing.
We could, but again, then that still creates two separate schools with different number of students.
You're still maintaining the schools. You're already like our school buildings.
So I didn't take that as a major consideration, because it's still depending on where, you may have to change the boundary all the time, and that's not clear to everybody either to keep the schools equal and stay.
Jessica Reagley and Anna Shaw again.
Before you, I just want to make sure nobody else has comments, because if not, then we'll terminate that, because if nobody else has their first comment, I'd rather have your comments come up first.
Hi, this is Ian Freeman, 21 Capewell. I realize that the district is in a tough place given the budgetary constraints, and I'm not a fan of grade-level schools. Um, and I'm not a fan of grade level schooling based on what I understand of it. Um, but I've also had a hard time finding specifics on the web when I've gone looking for information, which puts me in, in a similar place to a lot of people, I think, and still trying to figure out some of the specifics. Um, having been here today, I think is, is a good experience. Um, as a teacher, I have, I have issues with cutting budgets based on laying off teachers. I think it's negative. Um, I think there are other ways to go about it. My specific question though is more about my son and his experiences. He's a kindergartner. And based on what I've seen today and my understanding of this, he's going to be asked, he's a kindergartner at Hagan. He's gonna be asked to make two additional transitions in the next three years. Um, and from what I'm understanding, based on the proposals that you approved today, that, um, all the kids that are older than him in the school, first through fourth graders, will be returning most likely, if their parents choose, to Hagan next year. Right, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So it will only be most likely my son's classmates, kindergartners, who will be switching to Nassau and then two years later being switched back to Hagan. Um, which seems to me like a pretty big burden, given the fact that they're all kindergartners and going in with a bunch of people they don't know. I mean, is there, has there been any thought given to how we might, if this transition goes through as you're planning now, how we might ease this or provide some sort of accommodation for the kindergartners so that they're not asked to go through this sort of undue process of additional transitions, which has been shown statistically to be, have a negative impact on children's education?
That, that's, with three minutes, do you wanna talk about, like, ways to mitigate this?
In terms of what we're doing for the first graders, no, we haven't looked at anything like that. Um, I would say that the only way you can mitigate that for kindergartners is to keep them there for all three years, which essentially-
Transitions like we do with-
Well, we are trying to do things to make the transition easier in terms of getting the students acquainted before the end of the year and getting the teachers to work together with the kids on a project and, and that sort of thing.
So how is this something that would be worth looking into?
Oh, it is, and we will continue to and try and use PTAs and everything else to help do that. But, um, but we do it with the fifth graders and the middle school. Um, we do a lot of transitioning and-
Old, it's just great.
They are old, but we do a lot of things there and those type of ideas would be also used in the lower grades. And in both directions, Nassau to Hagan, Hagan to Nassau.
Can I take one answer if I have for try? Um, just a couple comments, and I have an actual question at the end, I promise. Um, I'm a parent of a four-year-old and a one-and-a-half-year-old, so I'm not a parent of a student. And had it not been for some of my friends who are parents of students, I would not know anything about grade level schools, bus routes, anything. So I, I guess my comment is, if you don't have a kid in school, there was no way you would know about this because of the board meeting, there's, there's no information, there's no hit to the looker. I don't know how you would- The rest of the community needs to- Know about it, that's- Um, my question is, um, this is my first point, but my question is, as I was reading this, um, it says that the, the vote for the budget is in May, or it's in May fifteenth, but, um, somebody mentioned the teacher contract negotiation starting June. So can you explain to me how we vote on a budget that we don't? How do we work in negotiating teachers' contract with a budget that may come before that?
Um, I think this is a good question. Um, again, it goes back to assumptions, um, but what we put in our budget was a zero increase in any outstanding budgets, um, other, outstanding contracts, excuse me. Uh, and except for staff, which is again required by, um, the tri-borough agreement under state law. Um, so those are included, but zero was put in.
Well, I think it was included, the benefits and salaries are having to be the biggest portion of the budget.
Unfortunately, that's true. Um, so basically that's how we did that, whether, and we have to try and negotiate something that will satisfy that, but it expires in June. It doesn't mean there'll be a new contract in place in June. Um, I mean, right now, the one, the third hope, yeah, expired last June and we still don't have a settlement on that one yet. So it can, it can take time to do, um, and especially now with the economy. Um, you know, there are, the unions are being asked to live with a lot less than they have in the past. And although for us in the private sector, that isn't anything new, um, it is in the public sector. And it, it doesn't just, those settlements don't necessarily happen overnight.
Um, Jennifer Sherry, fourteen, Bird Lane.
Give her the microphone, please.
You may have to get up closer to the computer.
Jennifer Sherry, fourteen, Bird Lane. Um, I just wanna say that grade level schools, part of the reason it's been sold or been tried, sold to the parents in the district is to help save high school programs, which will help kids getting to college. So it's been said at other meetings. I just want you to be aware that with the new configuration, as a parent of a kindergartner and a second grader who live in a Walker Zone in Hagan, what the flawed transportation plan is gonna mean to my family and my children's future plans for college. Reason being is because I can't just walk into my boss and say, my school district decided they're gonna change the start time of schools and they're gonna mix my kids up. And I have to scramble as a parent to figure out how to get them to school because one of my kids will be out busing, but not the other one? So what does that leave me as a parent to do? One, ask to go per time at my job, which could risk my job security, hinder my career growth, take away money that could go into my 401K retirement plan and money that could go into my children's college education. My other option is to enroll my kids into the YMCA school age program, childcare program that's at Hagan right now. I did a study based on the current rates that are for the YMCA program, the amount of money that my family will have to spend to utilize this program to maintain the new schedule, and what this is gonna mean to my children's future and how much money they're gonna lose in their college education. I can give you all copies of this and I can tell you that I'm currently earning seven percent of my college fund and that could mean a potential loss of a hundred and ten thousand dollars for my children's future. So I just want you to be aware. It's affecting their future, even though it's just the elementary school, the impacts are huge.
The one thing I would say though is we're not doing this so we don't impact high school. Cuts of high school has been cut in the past. It'll mean, by the looks of, the likely three-year scenario will be cut in the future. Um, we're, we're putting together a three-year plan on cuts to see where we can try and exist for the next three years with the least impact, um, and that will be available in February. So you will see high school, middle school, everybody's in this, it's not just the elementary. It's just because of enrollment decrease that has been a spot that can be used at the moment, but others will participate and have a test. Yes, Stan?
Hi, I'm Dana, I live in fourteen, six, five, Hill Road. Um, with tonight's, um, information about, you know, academic scoring being in question at the middle school, obviously it poses even greater concern for academic stability and growth in middle school because it is a reality that we do have to meet certain scoring numbers set by the state. Um, and keeping that in mind, this type of transition definitely does not, does not benefit at the onset, potentially when it settles down, that, that may change for the first year or two. That definitely is not gonna benefit the stability of, of the most children going, heading into the middle school at this time. Um, the consistent thing since last September that has gone on is the inconsistency in information and planning. Um, and I understand it's a very complex situation. I have one question as far as why were real parents or educators from other schools that have made this transition ever brought in this past six-month period of time? When a lot more of us are aware of this, to pose some potential pros or benefits? Parents in Arlington that fourteen years ago had a full-day look school, split K through two, how come parents and educators, not administrators, that maybe their word wasn't, wouldn't be taken by the community, but why didn't you bring in other parents? We'll have looked through this and educators that have looked through this because really the burden, as much as it's on us, is on our, our K through five educators as well. The, the job that our teachers are gonna have next year in stabilizing our children is going to unfold with a new core curriculum and then helping to help our children adjust at the same time. So the burden is mainly on us and our educators. So I, I asked, why were they never brought in to speak about what the positive benefits were? What some of the obstacles were, how they worked through them, to how to lessen, I wouldn't say it would have dissolved anxiety on our part as parents, but why did you never bring them in to speak to us?
The first committee that met was comprised of all parents. Um, and that was the, the group that made the presentation in January of two thousand and ten.
Parents from other school districts who have done this.
Parents from other school districts did meet with that committee as well as administrators and teachers from other school districts, yes.
And you with us.
And, but the board event took it off the table. So those of us who started looking into this, we're young. We'll explain why there was not the same done the second time. First time, the committee was charged with making a recommendation as to whether or not to go with grade level schools. Second time, it was not to look at pros and cons, it was to look at what the plan would be like, what it would say if the board decided to go this route. And that was something that was best addressed by the teachers and staff in our own district with a couple of parents who served on the committee before. One was invited in from there, one came from the advisory council. Because they were looking at things like scheduling, they were looking at things like, um, the transition program and they know those best. I mean, they, they were not to give their opinion. They were there simply to say, what would it look like if you did this?
Okay, I, I, I know parents and I know teachers from other districts. I will be happy to recruit them. If this is going forward this September, I'm, I'm asking that at some point you do bring in parents and teachers from other districts who've had this go on and I will be happy to help you recruit them from Arlington, um, to give us as parents some insight into what some of the positive things are because you've only presented dollars and cents, which I understand is your obstacle. With that in mind, um, I'm confused why the teacher contracts are up in June, but in September, October, we were told that the administrators' contracts were not up until July or August. So why-
The administrators are not up for another year yet.
So then why were, I thought some of the administrators, including yourself, were renegotiated three to four weeks ago? Why was that done initially?
Mine was done last July. Um, the other administrators, some of the admin, we, we have two groups of administrators. One is a unified group that participates in a union. Those are the building administrators. Their contract is up a year from June. We have other district office administrators who have individual contracts and I know one of them is up this June, I'm not sure about the other two, to tell you the truth. Um, I, I have to-
So we have a lot, we have a considerable amount of money still unturned, which is a great amount between state funding, state aid, contracts. We are gonna ask teachers who are going to have larger classrooms with the most transition they've faced ever, this back until today, um, with the new core curriculum, to work three times as hard, potentially take no pay raise, take potential pay cuts with a core plan ahead at best. And so my advisement and a lot of the parents may not be thrilled with this suggestion is, you have stated at former meetings, this was not essential for this year. Going forward, it was going to be basically not an option not to go to grade level schooling. Why wouldn't, because you were split and you were not unanimous, considering, yes, this will go forward and take a year to plan this properly. And save you with the numbers and the classroom sizes that there aren't portions of it that do make sense. I don't want my children to have limited options in classroom sizes of twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven children with two teachers to facilitate all those children's needs. Why can't it be put off until the following calendar year? And we spend as a community and as an educational system the next year dedicating that to, because as this is going on, more and more unforeseen obstacles that are huge are coming up. Should the second graders stay? Should the fifth graders stay in a building with K through two? If we spent the next year transitioning them, unifying them, and instead of maybe the younger children going pumpkin picking, their field trips were spent together either at one school or the other. I'll bring pumpkins in, there are a hundred parents in here that'll bring pumpkins in. And unify each children so that if they do have to go for a year, they are familiar with the school. If you choose for second grade because they are younger the following year, that's understandable. But the fifth graders would be better associated with their peers. They would be introduced to each other and together before going into middle school and take the proper amount of time to do this the right way if it is inevitable to maintain the best education K through twelve. Because saving three hundred thousand dollars still means cuts all the way through middle school and high school and every program is necessary. My other issue, which has been an issue from the echo is, if my child's gonna be on Route nine, I want it mandated that their seat belts are on them on those buses. If they have to be in a booster seat, seatbelt, and if not ideal, they should have seatbelts on on the bus.
Tech Board, number one, I'm Elijah, I'm here. Um, I, I think, a piece that I think everyone seems to be missing tonight, and that is that, um, I think the board has to take a serious look at what's been going on in the community for the last several months. I have been here for six years since my daughter was a kindergarten and I've never seen attention paid to an issue as I have, and I think it's evident by the people in this room tonight. Um, people are looking at legal action, there's multiple meetings, there's entries. I don't know if any of you are following this or not. Some of the comments I'm gonna make, I've made two letters to the board and, which is apparently consistent with other people, I've gotten one response from someone. So I don't know what the board is, I think, I think you're all extremely naive if you don't realize what is going on. The community is in upheaval. There are people calling the press because of what's going on here. We, we already know of other, other districts that have significant dysfunction in their, on their boards. You were elected to represent the constituents. You were elected- To, to study issues and have the facts in front of you. By several of you, your, in your own admission, you have made statements multiple times that the administration failed to make their case for grade level schools. I think, I think that's evident when you have the superintendent at a school with only half the parents there saying, oh, well, if you wanna go to Todd, you know, you could go there for a year. Okay, where are they gonna go in Todd? What's the plan? Well, then you can have the first grader stay here. These are plans, this, these are ideas that are coming up because legal counsel, I guess three of them, is, is, you know, covering the cost to make those recommendations. I don't know that, but we're covering the cost to make those legal, uh, recommendations. I, I think you're missing the vote in that we have elected you, you're clearly not fulfilling your responsibilities. The, the superintendent enclose to the board and the taxpayers' monies are funding everything here. And yet many of the taxpayers, as the woman, uh, prior to me spoke, hasn't, didn't even get a letter, don't know anything about grade level schools. When those petitions were, were walked around, people didn't even know that this was going on. So I don't know whether the letters only went to parents or they didn't go to community members, I don't know. But I think you're out of touch with what's going on. And what you have now is really a community divided. You have people who are looking at other schools who are outperforming us and saying, why are we, we're at least spending a year on this? You've already had the community vote two to one against grade level schools. You had a committee work for a whole year who said it didn't work. And then what happens is, the superintendent and the senior, they see other, they see people, they see together a group of people, teachers, and not, couldn't involve parents, anybody working, couldn't have been involved in that group if they wanted to, and pushed the item forward. And then you all had a vote in December when no one really was around and pushed it in. I remember three years ago when I was at one of these board meetings and I asked the question, why is it that there's never any discussion or any questions from any members of the board? So far, I usually hear from two people here consistently. No one else says a word here. And I was asked, why is every decision unanimous? And the response I got back- And the response I got back from the board was, "Well, we try very hard prior to the meetings to all to have consensus." Clearly, this issue was not consensus. And I urge you as board members to take another look at this as you can through Robert's Rules of Order, and take another vote, or better yet, have a community vote on this issue, because they cannot...
On the committee that looked at it before, they did not recommend it, they actually found more pros than cons for going to grade level schools. But they had a threshold of 90% or so that they had a need to actually recommend it, so...
It was even.
It was even.
Pro for students, negative for the fight.
Pro for students, negative for community.
My name is Richard Trent, I live in the 4th Timberline Drive. I grew up on Gurling Drive, I attended kindergarten through the sixth grade at Nassau Elementary. On any given morning, I see various members of the Schmentel family walking to classes at Nassau. We were fortunate to have a neighborhood elementary school. My son is going to begin kindergarten in three years at the Hagan Elementary School. And I'm just here tonight to let you know that we are going to do everything we possibly can, for the next flipping of the war in the next couple of years, to make sure we retain the current system of neighborhood elementary schools. Thank you.
City of Nell, 13th Old Park Road. City earlier that one of the reasons you're looking at the GLS model is that evening out the class size from school to school. Historically, have you ever had a time where the school, where class sizes have diminished like they are now, and gone back up in the past 50 years?
50 years, I don't know, but...
Or how do I mean the past 10?
In the past eight, I can tell you easily that we really haven't had the kind of discrepancy we're having now, with the exception of when this current fourth grade was in first grade, and we cut a section at Nassau, because they were, they had class sizes of, I think, 12 in the two sections. And by the end of the school year, they had gotten more enrollment in, they restarted them, and I think it was 25 or 26 in a class, one section, and then it went up to 29, and we ended up putting the class back the following year.
Is there any reason that you guys didn't figure out why the number of changes, just demographics in the area, because of the county people moving out and moving in, whatever, is that the best guess of why it's complicated?
Yeah, I mean, we've had a professional demographic look at this, and his, I mean, this was a few years ago, but his estimates went through, I believe, 2015 or 16, and our numbers have been substantially lower than what he estimated, even at his lowest level. They usually give you three projections, low, median, and high.
Do you have the support of the teachers as a whole for the plan, or are they for or against it? Do you have any...
Their union has not allowed them to respond to that.
I can understand that the union might have a position, but I'm sure you've heard from the teacher here, there.
I've heard kind of a chance.
We have.
It's been positive, negative, or you can't say?
I've heard both.
Negative.
Have you looked into the possibility, and you don't want to, probably, budget-wise, that you could have 10 years of keeping that budget for that reserve fund at 1.4? And that's apparently the maximum you're allowed based on your overall budget for the year? Have you looked into the possibility of using $300,000 from that reserve fund to offset the savings of GLS plan initiative right now? To study if you're ever, and then actually see if your numbers, that you're still waiting to hear from the state, from your contract negotiations, all those things, come in, then you actually have real numbers to determine whether or not you need to save that much money, and in the meantime, you can only use, you know, $300,000 of your 1.4 that you had in reserve that you've used for, that you had for 10 years, and you haven't really had to use recently.
We have used it not for grade level schools, but we have used the reserves to offset the tax levy in the last two years.
But are they able to maintain the maximum amount of all those things over here?
Yes.
So you use it up one year, and then you regain it, play it.
Right. But to answer your other question about getting the information from the state, every year, we're in the same position. We get the information for next year, and then next year, we could be standing here having the same conversation that, you know, at the end of the school year, we'll have all of those numbers, and there comes a point...
But it seems like we're doing it backwards, we're going to, we have a middle part, an end part, we're going to make it fit, and then we'll make all those negotiations fit, fill up a flux. So we know we got this much allowance left over, so we'll negotiate X amount of this, positioning in this fence and that. You can backdoor and walk backwards into your numbers.
We assumed a 0% increase, I don't think we can assume better than that. Anything that would be different would be higher.
Did the board, did the board consider using the reserve fund at all, instead of going to the plan?
To me, it's just a one-year stop, stopgap, we've done that in the past to do things like that, and you're back at the same point the following year.
So the answer is a void.
To me, it doesn't apply to anything.
All right, last thing I would say, I would, I would ask either any member of the board, and the president, two members of the board that voted against it, make a motion, rescind your decision, and at least hold off until you get the final numbers to know what, what, what your budget actually is. And then take a vote based on actual hard numbers to vote.
Hi, my name is Satyajit Blunt, 56th Ed. Drive. I have a couple of things that I want to bring up. As part of the EDC contract presentation that was being brought up, there was a number, you may have misunderstood, but I want to clarify it with you. It said initial findings of $1.5 million to review, does that mean savings?
Projects.
Okay. I take that out. Does the board, in making the decision about GLS, look at the risk, any remediation thereof, or assurances to ensure the success of this decision? As an example, it's not just about, you know, making grade level schools, there's going to be cascading spiraling impact. A classic example of that is, many of you have run at the point about people leaving that area on lower enrollment. Is there an assurance from the board, or have you actually considered that because of this decision, there'll be people who can move out? I'm probably going to be one of them, I may think of moving out from this area, isn't that something the board has been thinking about?
I can't say I've actually thought of that.
So, so I would, I would strongly urge that with this decision, we should also try to look at any risk or cascading spiraling impacts that this may have. I think this is going to be very important.
About your point of people moving out of the district because of grade level schools.
Yep.
I'm a real estate agent, I work with a lot of realtors, and I've been having these conversations with other realtors who buy and sell houses, particularly in Spackville. And all of the people I spoke with...
Can you speak up with...
All the people I'm speaking with, they do not see an impact. Somebody just told me this week, she closed on a house, and she told the people lying, and she said, "Next year, the kids are going to be going to separate schools," and they said, "Fine, we want to be in Spackville, it's okay if they have to go to separate schools."
Okay, and then I, I understand your... I understand your viewpoint there, but I also want to underline the fact that it seems like, for example, like somebody brought up this excellent point that, you know, board is actually, you know, you guys are putting in a lot of hard work, doing a lot of homework and everything, doing a great job. You're literally running the school system, making sure that the school system is successful and set up for future success. But right now, as you can see, there are probably like about 100 odd people around here, and there's a strong feeling, and I'm pretty sure you're also getting it, that it's looking more like it's us versus them situation. Which is a clear indication that this decision is not an inclusive or participatory decision, which had community totally involved. If that was the case in past one year, within indicating community was here and there, why do I see 200 people at 10 o'clock at night? I eat my dinner pretty late, but this is like super late. So I think it's very important that you see a lot of opposition to the decision, it makes a lot of sense to hold back, let's step back, let's have more conversations. There are very smart brains in this room, and people can actually work together to come to a decision which is good for the kids, because it's not about us versus them, it's about kids.
Hi, I'm Doris Ponce, I have kids in Hagan Middle School and High School. I've been here before, I'm kind of getting tired of the late-night meetings, as I'm sure you guys are, but I feel compelled to speak up about this one more time. We voted tonight to go to five sections per grade with a couple of exceptions. So you guys all know that there is no additional savings with grade level schools over keeping this current situation that we have and making the same reductions. In fact, there's no... When you go to four sections, there are the savings, you all, you all know that. I know you've seen the numbers, Dr. Powell said that the savings come when you go to four sections. We voted unanimously not to go to four, so there is no savings to grade level schools. You have 400 parents opposed to this decision. And I know you often bring up the fact that there are other people that aren't coming to the meeting and weighing out, weighing in on this issue. We know who those are, they're seniors who want cost savings. The tax cap will require them to get the same savings, no matter how they're done. There is no other support for this, except for the people in this room opposing it.
Kevin, please talk to us, thank you.
In the documentation you provided tonight, there's also the issue of class sizes at Todd Middle School. I don't know why that wasn't addressed last year. In fact, I have it, middle school would be affected, but there's no reason why you didn't address class sizes. Dr. Powell, you and I spoke about this in August. There's no reason why you didn't change class sizes for this current year going into, with what we have, those numbers are so small. You're making decisions too late, yet you're making this decision so darn early before anything's thawed out. It's really kind of a... And I would like to ask Mr. Keith and Dr. Willoughby, why will you not bring up tonight to, to oppose this?
Well, I was going to wait for comments from the board, but I'm not going to speak to Keith, I'm going to speak to myself. I didn't vote for it the first time around, but there are reasons why, that I saw that there were good reasons for it, but I had some reasons not to vote for it. But I believe in the process that we have here, democratic process, there's five people on the board, everybody gets a vote, the majority of the votes rule the day, and we had 60% of the people voted to, to accept the grade level school. So I, myself, now am in 100% support of the rest of the board's decision.